Is it time?
Yeah.
Close enough.
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, welcome to the Shawnee County Board of County Commissioners Work Session. It's Monday, August 28th of 2023. On my left is Commissioner Eric Mays, on my right, who represents District 3. And on my right is Commissioner Kevin Cook, who represents District 2. I'm Bill Rippon, I represent District 1. And we have Jim Crowell on the far right, who's our county councillor. And today, we have John Land with our Weed Department. He's going to talk about drones and other things, so.
We're going to talk about a little bit of everything under the sun, Commissioner. I printed you out of this PowerPoint presentation because some of it's a little hard to see. I had to use little numbers. Again, for the audience, my name is John Land. I'm the Director of the Weed Department. I'd like to welcome you this morning to our presentation. We're going to walk through a little bit of stuff here on, on, this is, this is the new building. Well, not new building, the revised look of our building. It's been all freshly painted, our equipment's sitting right out front there. You can see the three spray trucks and then, and then our three gators here. This morning, we're going to talk about, I'm going to introduce the staff to you. Our purpose on what we do, common noxious weeds found in Shawnee County. The control practices for each one of those weeds. What our cost share program for herbicides looks like and entails. Herbicides available for noxious weed control only. Our enforcement program. Kansas Department of Ag Regulations and Rules that we have to follow. And then notable changes in financials of basically since 2020 when I started as Director. And then Commissioners, I'd say if you have any questions, we could either answer them at the end or if you want to, if you want, you're more than welcome to ask at the time of the deal and we'll, and we'll cover them then. Probably easier to do it that way. So here's, here's our staff. I'm not in the picture, I'm taking the picture actually. So Sarah Bailey, she's our Account clerk 2. Butch Romic, he's in the center of there. He was a forestry guy for Parks and Rec. And then when he retired, we hired him as an applicator. He had worked for the Weed Department as an intermittent applicator back when John Cabus was Director. And then he worked for me in 2020. And then we hired him full-time as an applicator last year. Tyler DeWitt is on my far left there. He's, he's our intermittent customer service representative. He's the one that people greet and meet when they buy chemicals. And then Lisa DeWitt, who's not in the picture. She was our intermittent customer service person this year while Tyler was out spraying. And the gentleman on the far right is Shane Ware. He's the applicator who left in June. Our equipment here, we have three spray trucks and three UTVs. We have nine pull behind sprayers and six skids that we rent out to the public for all their noxious weed control and their bare ground stuff that they do. Our trucks, our trucks have some pretty unique equipment in it, Commissioners. They're, they got Raven controllers in there. So I don't know if you're familiar with a lot of ag companies, but these Raven controllers, they control the ground speed. And, and so on a normal pump setup, whatever that pump and that motor runs at, that, you're going to get that constant spray out. So whatever the capability is that pump. Well, with the Raven controllers, it, it monitors the ground speed. And so it'll track the truck. If it's, if it's doing five miles an hour, it'll slow that rate down to achieve that 20 per, 20 gallon per acre rate. If you're going faster, then it'll open that valve up to spray it, to be able to allow that, to keep up with it. The gators are just diaphragm pumps, so they, what that pump will put out is what it puts out. So some really great, really great technology and equipment there. So we can maintain that the proper amount of gallons per acre on the equipment and what we're putting down. And then here's how our organizational chart stacks up. You have the Account clerk and then the seasonal customer service. And then we have the applicators over here on the, on the right-hand side. So in our budget proposal for this year, when you look at this bottom, this bottom one, that's part-time seasonal pesticide applicator Cletus. This is the position that, that we were given up the intermittent applicator position for, to hire a full-time position. That would give us three full-time applicators. And our purpose. So here's, here's our main goals of what we try to do at the Weed Department. We try to educate the public about noxious weeds in Kansas. So that's, that's our main goal, is education. We, we try to drive education. Giving you the latest technology on, on herbicides to use, on when to spray it, what's the best time to spray. Just everything you could want to know about plants. And, and we do weed identification, just in case you had something that was non-noxious in your fields and, and that type of stuff. And we try to stop the spread of noxious weeds. So when you, when you look at the law on, on how it's written, you know, we're, we're to eradicate weeds, but the main part of that is to stop the spread of it. So we're trying to stop viable seed, is what we're trying to do. And so when you, when you look at, oh, like control for, for the state, it's, it's, you're stopping, you're stopping the spread of viable seed.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
John, just a question for you. We're required to have a Weed Department by statute.
Correct.
When we were looking at our Health Department, we had the Health Department and we had the Health Agency. And if you go back, at one time Shawnee County was the Health Agency. We had a whole department and personnel that were the Health Agency. We then shifted that to Grace Med. And they were then are designated, federally designated, federally qualified healthcare. What would stop Shawnee County? Why should Shawnee County even have a Health Department? Why not just contract out with a private applicator? They're our designated weed applicator by statute and people contact them. What's the benefit in having a Shawnee County Health Department as opposed to just privatizing the whole darn thing? And it's kind of a hard question on a Monday at 9:06.
Wow. Yeah, and not knowing the, the history of, of them back when they were the Health Department.
Well, and I'm using them just as an example.
Okay.
But I mean, we privatize mowing, we privatize different things within the county.
Well, so I, I think one of the, one of the huge benefits are is, is, you know, when you, when you come to our office for, for advice, you have somebody there. When you're out spraying right of ways, it's, it's guys that are committed to it. That's not a private entity, they're, they're a government agency. And so they, they, you know, I, I think they're going to look more toward trying to protect the sensitive crops out there. When you, when you go back into the sales part of it, is you're always going to have to have at least one person there by law because you're, it's, you're either going to sell chemical or you're going to cost share it and, and do certificates. That means somebody's still going to have to come to that office. You're going to have to have somebody there to sign that, that certificate and then send them to, say Tar Waters or Premier to pick up that chemical. So I think if they're coming to the Weed Department anyway to get that certificate, why not offer that service for them to be able to pick up that chemical there? It saves them a trip across town. You know, I think the nightmare of trying to keep that paperwork straight would be, would be horrible for somebody as well. You know, and, and I think with independent companies, you probably get, you probably get the, you know, it's, it's a job to them. And, and these guys really do want to stop weeds in Shawnee County that are affecting their neighbors. You know, for, for the residents of Shawnee County, they, I'm just amazed at how much chemical we sell to the public that, that people actually want to, you know, they want to stop weeds. And, and our sprayer program is, is just, it's crazy. I mean, you know, I, we have nine pull behind sprayers and, and I could have nine more and they'd be out every day. I mean, it's, it's, it's a full-time job just for one guy sitting there checking sprayers back in, rinsing them out, being sure they work fine and sending them right back out. It's, we'll have sprayers go out, same sprayer will go out once or twice a day. So, you know, there's so many benefits to it being done in-house as an independent company that, that you really don't, you're not going to get the, you're not going to get the rental sprayer program from, from somebody else. I mean, it's, it's something that's offered here that I can't imagine a, a true Green Chem Lawn or, or somebody like that would, would do it. They might, but.
I mean, are there private companies right now that are doing spraying of fields? Or are there, or is it just farm by farm and their own equipment?
Well, so I think, I think it's based on, so like Lone Pine used to do it, they're out of business now. And now it's JB Pearl over in Perry or Mary. But they, they, you know, they're in business to do large acreage, you know, 120 acres because of their booms and, and all that. When you get into the small stuff that, that Shawnee County has, 10 acres and under, there's, there's no one out there really that does it. You know, we, we've been searching since 2020 to find somebody that could come in and, and help these elderly residents out that, you know, aren't able to get out there anymore. They're not able to come and get the sprayer and tackle that. But there's just no one. We've had a couple of guys stop by and, and say they want to get into this. And, and, you know, we point them in the right direction and give them advice on what they need to do. And they want to get a full wheeler and do this. But then they never, we never hear anything from them. They, they don't ever, I guess, follow up and come through. So there's a huge demand for somebody to, to spray 10 acres and under in Shawnee County. And we get calls every day about people wanting us to come spray for them. Just because there's no one out there. But, you know, we don't have that, we don't have the personnel to do it. I'd love to help them. I mean, a lot of these are just out of their 10 acres. They got maybe, you know, a one acre patch that, you know, more than anybody's going to go out there and pick heads on a thistle when you're, when it's hot and you're, and you're up in your 90s. But it's something we could do real easy, but we just, we just don't have the staff for it. So, but if anybody's listening and they want to get in that business, it's, it's, there's a market there. So.
I think too, though, a lot of ranchers and whatnot, they kind of depend on us to main, or to, to control weeds and especially road ditches and things. They don't want those invaders into their pastures. And they don't see that as their responsibility, but ours. And we're the ones that take care of that, so.
And I think, you know, I think the proof is in the pudding. When you go to Johnson County, you know, they, they use an independent contractor to spray for like KDOT. And we all know what, you know, those roads, roads look like when you're driving down 435 or, or K10 in there. They're just, they're bad. And, you know, I, I like, I like to think that ours, we're not the cleanest by any means, but, but, you know, you're really going to have to look to see some for us, so.
Thank you.
So, and then we spray weeds in Shawnee County, sell chemicals to the landowners. And, and like I said Commissioners, I'm just amazed when I, when I come over here in 2020, the, the amount of chemicals that we, that we sell. It's, it's, it's crazy. And kudos to the residents because, you know, they want to try and, and they're the ones doing it. And so the rental sprayer program, you know, $20 a day, it's, it's a, it's a deal. It's a deal and a half. And, and like I said, we can't keep these sprayers in. And, and it promotes them going out and taking care of noxious weeds. I mean, you got them and, and how could you not go treat them when it's only going to cost you 20 bucks? And so. And so I want to go over kind of a little bit about everything we do, just, and, and of course, it's more than just one slide, but. So we spray about 300 centerline miles just for public works. That's part of what we do, is what we're here for, is take care of noxious weeds along county right of way. And so then we do bare ground work for public works. So all the guardrails, trying to keep the vegetation out of the guardrail so that Kurt's workers don't have to go in there and weed eat all that stuff down. So all these things are, the noxious weed part of this for what we do for Shawnee County, that's, that's kind of what our program is here for. Everything else is, is kind of just add-ons, is a little bonus for us. And so every, all the other entities that we do work for, we bill them time, material and, and equipment. With Shawnee County, we don't charge, say, Public Works or our department for noxious weed control. We, you know, that's, that's all taken care of by us. Bare ground work, we, we actually charge Kurt for the chemical part of it, but the labor part is, is we do as part of what, what we're doing. It's also, excuse me. It's also a deal that we worked out with him that in exchange for us doing the bare ground work, they work on a lot of our vehicles and equipment. And so we pay for the parts that they use, they change our oils, they maintain our forklift. Any parts that they use, we pay for those. The labor that they do is just a swamp for us for, for doing their bare ground. Now, all the other entities, they, they pay for all that work. So KDOT is about 83 centerline miles of right of way for KDOT. Seems like there's a whole lot more than that when you're on KDOT's roads, but that's, that's what KDOT has listed on their site for Shawnee County. And of course, you know, when you're looking at the acreage of this, it's, it's hard to come up with an acreage because, you know, some of our right of ways, probably 15 feet. But when you look at KDOT's right of way, it, it could be a couple hundred feet. When you get over here at K4 and, and I-70 and all that, I mean, they own all the way to about Rice and, and all that interchange. It's, it's just huge. So, you know, it's kind of hard for me to put an acreage down on it. But the townships consist of about 699 centerline miles of right of way. We take care of all the Walker Russia watersheds that's inside of Shawnee County. And there's eight in Osage County that we maintain and three in Douglas County that we maintain. Call Drainage District, which is basically, Call Drainage District is the levee that starts on the, on the north side of the river at 75 Highway. And, and that levee runs all the way to Silver Lake. And so that's Call Drainage District. Right there at Silver Lake, same levee on the north side. It starts at Silver Lake and runs all the way to about a mile and a half, two miles into Potawatomi County. That's Tri-County Drainage District, Drainage District. And we maintain that. City of Topeka, we do a lot of work for the City of Topeka Stormwater. That's the levee system on the south side of the river. Starting about, oh, just to the, just to the west of the river tracks there on Topeka Boulevard. And runs all the way over to Shanganunga Creek. And then the levees for Shanganunga that run all the way up to, to 470. And of course, there's, there's other areas, the concrete ditch lining over there in Lower Silver Lake Road, that little deal, we, we bare ground that for them. Some of their substations, all their shot rock, some, there's, there's just multiple other locations that we do for about City of Topeka. Shawnee County Parks and Rec, we bare ground the, the face of the dam for them every year. And then take care of the grassy stuff growing in the beach at, at Adventure Cove. The Sheriff's Office, we bare ground all the radio towers, evidence building and training facilities of gun range. And Shawnee County Solid Waste, we take care of over there where the recycling plant is in the, in the yard behind the North Annex. And so when you figure, when you figure just the mileage of those contracts up Commissioners, that's about 2,400 miles of right of way. And, and that's, we target that three times a year. And so it's 2,400 miles and then however wide that road right of way is that. So, you know, it could be hundreds and hundreds of acres. And, and so when we figure, and how we come up with that 2,400 miles, when you figure centerlane miles, we, we can't really spray centerlane miles. We have to actually travel both sides of the road and spray. And so you're doubling that for us. Even, even on the county roads where there are gravel roads and there's minimal traffic, you know, it's, you can't really be watching for weeds out this side of the truck and, and see the other side of the ditch too. So you're, you're actually traveling that road and turning around and coming back the other side. Common weeds in Shawnee County and their control practices. And I won't, I won't bore you with a lot of these. You know, I put slides in here for all of them and, and control practices and herbicides approved and all that. And, and so we're just going to touch on a few of them. So the common weeds that we have in Shawnee County are musthistle, field bindweed, Johnson grass and cerise lespediza. Those are the common ones that we have here. It seems like they're growing everywhere. We have a little bit of hory crest, a little bit of Canada thistle. They're small patches, they're contained, we know where they're at, they've been identified. Some of them are on private landowners that, that we work with them individually to keep under control so they don't spread. But these four here, they're everywhere. They're in, they're in all the right of ways, they're in all the fields, every, just everybody's dealing with this. And so musthistle, you know, back in the day, musthistle used to be, this used to be the weed everybody harped about. I mean, you know, I think all of us can remember as kids going out in grandpa's field and picking heads and putting them in a sack and burning them and all this. You know, when you, when you think about it, musthistle's probably one of the easiest plants to ever control that there is. You know, this, this thing is, this thing is nothing compared to what's out there now. And so with musthistle, it's a biennial plant, so it grows two years. The first year it's a rosette, stays a rosette, the second year, then it bolts up and, you know, develops this pretty little purple head on there. And so then after that, you know, it just puts off just a ton of seeds and it dies. And so this one's, this one's relatively easy. The state, and now all these control practices, herbicides, the whole nine yards, these are things that KDA mandates. They're not, they're not things we put in place. You know, we're not the ones telling you you can mow or you have to spray or, or that. These are all, these are all come from KDA. The same as, the same as the herbicide list, when you get into the cost share program, they're the ones who dictate what, what chemicals you can spray on what weeds. Cultural control practices, you know, sheep and goats graze on musthistle. Sheep and goats seem to be the, the thing here for a lot of things anymore. Just all your invasive weeds, just turn some goats loose and, and find a way to keep them in. And, and we're in business then, so. And here's the herbicides that's approved from musthistle. 24D, amino pyrillid are some of the common ones. Metsulforon is another one, picloram. Translate these in English for everybody. Picloram's Tordon 22K, it's a, it's a restricted use herbicide. You have to be licensed to be able to buy it. Metsulforon is Escort, another great chemical. Amino pyrillid is Milestone, and then everybody knows what 24D is. So back in the, and, and this is still a popular mix today is 24D and picloram Tordon. It's a popular mix, it's what we use on our roadsides.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
John, what are we doing to work with the Conservation District or the Extension Office to make sure the chemicals we're spraying are not getting into the groundwater?
So, so we have, the nice thing about being just right down, down the road from K-State Extension, we have a great working relationship down there. They're passing customers off, we're sending customers down to them. And so one of the things that we did to mitigate and reduce the amount of chemicals that we apply is in 2020, we stopped blanket spraying. And when I say blanket spraying, that means just taking miles and miles of road and spraying full, full right of way spraying. Now we just spot spray. It was very important to me to, to be a good steward and, and not try to pollute our waterways and stuff. And, and quite honestly, you know, when, when somebody says blanket spraying to me and, and when I started in 2020, we used to take a third of the township and divide that up and blanket spray a third of that whole township. And so when you look at that program, you know, what happens if there's no weeds there? You know, why, why did I spray it? Because there's no weeds, you know? We're not, I guess, we're not trying to make, you know, a manicured yard. We're, we're trying to control weeds in a, in a ditch line. And so what's the point of dumping chemicals someplace where we didn't really need it just to control, you know, some broadleaf weeds there? And so we changed our policy and we spot spray about five feet in front of the plant to five feet behind the plant now. And so that's the only, that's the only spraying that goes on unless we're, unless we're taking care of a full pasture and, and say, you know, the county owns a bunch of ground. Some out by the district shops and, and things like that. And, and it'll have cerise in it and, or other weeds. And we'll, and we'll full spray that just to try to get the pasture under control. But roadsides are just, you know, we, it's a, it's a different approach. The same thing for, and we do this for all of our entities as well. It's only spot spraying each and every location that there's a specific weed. So that's what we've done to try to reduce the amount of herbicides that we put down on the ground and so on, so.
John, you mentioned, and that, I think that's great what you were just talking about. It saves money and time and, and improves the groundwater and whatnot. But you mentioned Tordon, mixing that with 24D. But that's not available to the general public, right?
That is correct.
You have to be a commercial applicator to buy that.
Yeah. Yeah, you can have a, a private applicator's license or a commercial applicator's license to buy Tordon. It's something we do sell there, the, the farmers take advantage of that and, and buy it. But, you know, our, our Tordon numbers since 2020 has been on a, on a, on a decrease. You know, I think, I think really what's spurring this is technology's really going different directions with chemicals. And, and so, you know, amino pyrillid, which is Milestone, was something brought and introduced to the market to try to, you know, get you to switch over from Tordon. Amino pyrillid's a great chemical, it's, it's, you can apply it up to water's edge. Where Tordon, you have to stay completely away from water with it. And so I, I think the advances in, in chemicals kind of is, is really affecting picloram sales for us, Tordon sales for us in, in this area. You know, they've been on a steady decline. And it's one of the, it's one of the more harsh chemicals that, that's out there just because of the, the longevity of it, it stays in the ground soil for about six months. Works great as a pre-emergent, and that's one of the reasons why we use it as the pre-emergent part of, of spot spraying in front and behind those weeds is anything that seeded drops down there. And then if it tries to germinate next year, within six months, that, that Tordon's there to stop it.
You have to be so careful with it because it transcends to other plants too.
Yeah.
Through the roots and.
You know, Tordon, specifically Tordon is, you know, if the waters, if the ditch is holding water, you know, you can't use Tordon in it. You know, and there's, there's always areas that you're going to find a ditch that's, you know, kind of got a little slough off and it's holding water right there. And so, so it, it does, it does affect how the guys go about spraying. But it's still a good program, still good, still a good chemical. The next one's going to be bindweed. Bindweed is, is everywhere. There's really no good control for bindweed. You know, it's, it's a very hardy, hardy plant. The root system can go down about 60 feet. As you, as you look around, you'll see it growing everywhere. Especially within the city limits next to the curb, gravel roads. Kind of looks like somebody went in there and white striped a gravel road, you know, just so you know where it's at. Like I said, very hardy plant, just very, very tough to get rid of. I think that, you know, this, this thing will be, they'll be battling it till I'm long and gone and for the next 50 years past that probably. Just, I, I don't think, I honestly don't think they found a good chemical that works great on it yet. Although there is, there is a new one that we've been trying out that seems to, seems to work great on it. I just, it's, it's way early to tell in the test plots that we did how long it lasts. And so, but it'll definitely kill it right away. Just will it control it for a long period of time is, is yet to be seen.
We had an area on our farm about the size of this room. And we farmed around that for about six years. And kept putting different chemicals on till we finally killed it. But plowing through, you just spread it.
Yeah. I, I don't, I, I think bindweed's about the only weed that I've ever seen that I haven't, I haven't seen anybody actually control and get rid of it and, and keep it going. I haven't seen anybody actually control and get rid of it and, and keep it gone. I, I mean, it just, no matter what you do, just keeps coming back. There's the control methods for it again. Here's the herbicides approved for it. And I will emphasize again, these are, these are all put in place by KDA. It's, we have nothing to do with this list. These are the ones that they tell us that we can cost share for. And so if you come in and you wanted to buy, say, tricloprir product to spray your bindweed, we're going to tell you no because it's not listed on there. And so we can't sell you tricloprir to spray bindweed. It has to be an approved herbicide for that, for that plant. And then Johnson grass. I think the next two weeds commissioners are probably the weeds that we're going to focus on here in Shawnee County the most. You know, Johnson grass is a big one. Ceresas is the next big one. I think it's, I think both of them are something that we can make a huge dent in. And I would say, when you look at our state report, these are probably, these are, these next two weeds here are probably the ones that's predominant in Shawnee County that, that we, that we battle most of summer on. I, I, I don't know the acreage infested off the top of my head what we reported to the state, but, but between these two, it's, it's a lot. Johnson grass seems like once you mow it down tomorrow, it'll be a foot tall again. There's a, I like to joke with people when they come in to buy herbicides for, for Johnson grass. I'll just skip to the herbicide pages, is, there's, there's a laundry list of, of herbicides you can use here, and the one that sticks out is glyphosate. And so when people come in to buy chemical for Johnson grass, they, they ask for roundup to spray their Johnson grass with. And, and I said, well, do you want to spray it to get rid of it? Or do you want to spray it to get rid of it this year? Well, I, I want to get rid of it. Well, glyphosate's not what you want because all we're doing is just burning the leaves off of it. You hit the problem this year and tomorrow, or next year, it's, it's right back to where it's at. You don't stop the spread of it, you don't do anything, you're just out of sight, out of mind. And so when you get into any other chemical on this list, then it becomes very, very pricey quick. And so we're talking the difference of $30 for two and a half gallons of glyphosate that you can spray it for the rest of your life, or you're talking minimum of $180 a gallon for, for a chemical that actually attacks the rhizomes and, and tries to kill it. We have both in stock. We, we don't, we don't sell, but maybe one or two gallons a year of the, of the expensive stuff to try to get rid of it. And so that's, that's kind of the funny story on, on the grass.
So that, that's the only thing that?
Yeah, when you're-
So the glyphosate, the pasture guard, I think is the brand name.
Pasture guard is actually a broadleaf herb, so it won't do anything to grasses.
Oh, well, okay.
Yeah. So the two that we have is panoramic, 2SL down there, and then once that's gone, we're switching over to a chemical called outrider. Little more scary on the price, but when you factor cost per acre, it becomes a better substitute for panoramic than that. The other good thing about it too is outrider's less harsh on your cool season grasses like brooms and panoramic, if you, if you full spray it, it, it will appear that you went in there and just glyphosated everything. It'll all be brown because it's just the way it works. When you're trying to get rid of a grass in a grass, that's, I mean, it's, it's tough. That's, I think that's probably one of the weed department's worst nightmares, when somebody comes in and says, I got, I got Johnson grass in my broom field, what can I use? Man, that, that becomes tough because it's a cool season grass, and all these chemicals are really harsh on cool season grasses. And the hotter the temperature gets, the worse it gets. And so when you get into this time of year where it's been really, really hot, things are stressed already and you hit it, it, it'll wipe them out. Now, some of the nice things are is, is brooms real, you know, it'll come back, it'll, but, you know, it's, it's probably going to come back a little lighter next year. So that's, just, just always remember, grass in a grass is tough. And ceresas, you know, this is, this is, this is the director's worst enemy right here. I mean, this makes thistles and everything else that we have just in no comparison. This thing is hardy, it's great for soil stabilization, that's how it got introduced to here. It was put in the seed mixes to, to help with soil stabilization on road projects. And then somebody in the 2000s said, uh-oh, we got a problem. And, and now it's, it's a problem. It's, it's everywhere. And, and, and if it's not there, just give it a little while, it's, it's coming because you can't stop this thing. I mean, if, if you have somebody that's not doing their part to control it, it, it's going to take everybody. If, if you don't do your part, deer eat it, turkeys eat it, they love it. They'll walk over and birds eat the seed and they'll sit on the fence and, and next thing you know, you'll have ceresas next to the fence and, and across your pasture and you always wonder how it got there. Well, it got there by either an animal or when you had your, when you had your field hayed, it come in on their swather and bounced off and dropped, so. I can't tell you enough about this weed. It, so about this time of year now, this thing, and it's a pretty good picture, you can see this, but it'll develop little white flowers right next to the leaf in the brack of the plant. That's when it blooms and goes to seed. So all the way up to now, that plant has kind of just been growing and turning dark green. It's easy to spot along the roadside, it's darker than anything else. And so, but now this time of year is when you really want to go after this thing and, and knock it back from seeding. It'll, it'll just drop thousands of seed right there that'll sit in the ground for years and years and years and, and they'll just keep germinating and, and you don't ever get a head, it seems like. Mowing this time of year to keep it from blooming is a pretty good, pretty good option for you. In fact, with ceresas, we recommend, the minute you can see it in June towering above all your other grasses, start spraying it with remedy, pasture guard, anything like that. After September 15th, switch over to metsulforon. Metsulforon is the, is the granular herbicide that you use. It takes about 60, 90 days before you start to see anything happen with the plant. It'll start turning yellow and, and so after it seeds, if you've caught it that late, then, then hit it with the metsulforon, it helps sterilize seed. But anytime you can actively see it go up, go ahead with pasture guard, remedy, tricloprir product, anything like that. I don't know why the state has picloram on here. Picloram will not do anything to ceresas. It's just ineffective. And we're almost out of the boring stuff. Possible noxious weeds, I think I mentioned this to you guys earlier in the year, that potentially could be added to the noxious weed list is Calgary pear, cut leaf teasel, common leaf teasel and honeysuckle. The cut leaf and common leaf teasels found primarily along the road sides, mostly on KDOT stuff. It likes wet locations, and so when they mow this time of year after it's dried out, then all that seed falls on their deck and then they just keep mowing and it bounces off and before you know it, it's, it's everywhere. Not a huge problem in Shawnee County. We, we have it, just not a huge problem. It's localized, I don't know of real big patches, some, some over off I-70 and, and that area, but just nothing, nothing real huge, nothing to concern ourselves. Very, very easy plant to control, actually. The leaves when they grow up are more like funnels, and so the minute you spray it, it holds right there at the leaf and the, and the brack of that plant. And so it just, don't have a choice but to take it, chemicals. Honeysuckle, a little tougher one here for us to try to, try to figure out. The state recommends treating honeysuckle with glyphosate in the fall after everything else goes dormant. And so your grass goes dormant and then you can spray honeysuckle when it still has the berries on it. They've had a lot of success out of it. It seems to work great, but, you know, it gets that time of year that, you know, it's, I, I guess the good thing for Shawnee County is it, it's late in the season after everything else has gone dormant and we can focus on this. I wish there was another chemical besides glyphosate that, that would work on it. We've done a couple little test plots and had good success with it. The drawback is the great success that we had with it also will harm all your good trees. And so if you had walnuts or oaks or something like that, then, then, you know, you potentially could kill those as well. Calgary pear, the Bradford pear family, from my understanding what the state is intending on doing is, is quarantining this tree for sales out of the, out of the landscape yards and, and greenhouses at first, and then it'll go on there. And of course, my first question was, well, what do we do with all the big, beautiful Calgary pears lined up in your driveway that you planted years ago? And, and so they're not going to do anything with the existing plants and trees that are growing. What they're going to do is focus on any new growth. So if it's a new infestation, then, then they'll be enforceable that way. And so any, any old infestation, there won't be any enforcement part to it. And so, you know, it's, it's a good approach. I don't know, it's a great approach from the landscaping part of it, where you have it planted in your trees for, for your driveway and things like that. But if you've got a pasture that's overgrown in it, I don't know that that's probably a great approach, but we'll see. I would anticipate that these will probably be added at some point in time.
John, a couple things. So the honeysuckle, I know a lot of people just mow them over, right? And then they keep coming back and just mow them every year, right? Basically, but the glyphosate, my understanding, it doesn't actually really kill it, it just kind of knocks the leaves off of it, doesn't it?
Yeah. So it, it kind of knocks the leaf off of it. You're, you're trying to, if you mow it down, the best thing to go in there with, with like Tordon RTU, something that you buy at Tractor Supply, Orshlin, somewhere like that, put in a little one gallon sprayer, and the minute you mow it, come back in and spray those. That'll kill it out and keep it from rebushing back.
And you have to do that with pear trees.
Yeah, you have to-
Because they, they spread real quick once you cut them.
Yeah. So any tree, really, when you think about it, you know, you cut down a tree that's not dead, you look at it and in the next couple of years and it's got, now it looks like a big bush. And, and so any tree that you're trying to kill after you cut it down, then spray it with Tordon RTU, around two inches on that outside rim and it'll, it'll keep it from doing that, so. Yeah, the roots on the Calgary pear, what's, what's bad with it is, is they'll splinter and they'll just, they just keep developing more shoots off the root system as it goes. Okay, cost share program for herbicides. Here is the complete list of, of cost share chemicals for herbicides here for, for each weed as they're, as they're listed out. And so the best way to explain this to you, in, in simple math and numbers, is if, if a gallon of chemical costs the county $100, we have to sell it to you for 75 mandated by statute. And so that's the cost share part of the chemical. And that's your encouragement to go treat noxious weeds. That's what they come up with years ago. And so when you, if you want to come in and, and say, buy glyphosate to treat, oh, just, just pick anything. I mean, as you can see glyphosate on the list, you're able to buy it to treat field bindweed, musthistle, Johnson grass, Canada thistle, leafy spurge, quack grass, kudzu, Russian nap weed, but it's, you see that ceresas is not on there. And you also see that they'll probably add the honeysuckle on there whenever, if it goes on. But if you come in and, and want to spray your ceresas with, with glyphosate, it can't happen. You'll also notice on here that your driveway and around your buildings and fences is not on here, so. So if you come in and that's what your intentions are and you say, I need something to spray my driveway or around my buildings and fences, we're not going to sell it to you. You know, it's, it's for the control of noxious weeds only. And so, so that's kind of how the, that's, that's how the cost share program works. So we have chemicals down there that we don't cost share. A lot of our Mazron, Mojaves, things like that, that are done for bare ground control that aren't cost shared. And those are offered to businesses for like LKQs, big salvage yard places that for us to be able to promote keeping your weeds out of those lots, that, that we charge full price, you buy the chemical, it's not cost shared and you can bare ground your lot with it. Something that was offered years ago and I just continued with, just simply because it keeps the salvage yards and, and stuff like that presentable. Enforcement, I'll touch a little bit about enforcement on here. How it works is every year, twice a year, we post the general notice in the county newspaper. That normally goes out in March and July. If you call our office and, and there's a landowner that has a weed infestation, then we show up and we knock on their door, we try to contact that landowner. If they're not home, we try, you know, looking up a phone number. So we try every means possible to make contact with you, educate you on, on what that weed is, what goes on, what you need to do to control it. If, if we can't get ahold of you, then we send you out a warning notice. You have 14 days to comply with that warning notice. Extensions can be given, depending on the stage and maturity of that plant. Thistles are the only ones that have a little bit of a, oh, we don't normally do extensions on thistles just because they go to seed so quick, but they're also the one weed that, that part of the enforcement is, we can, we can postpone any kind of enforcement issue and, and make you spray it in the fall. That's the only weed that we can, we can do that for. So after, if you ignore the, the, the 14 day notice and we don't get any compliance out of you, then we contact the county councilor's office before proceeding any further. The next step after that would be a legal notice. It's sent out certified mail and you have 10 days to comply from that. Found non-compliant after 10 days from the date of the certified letter, we would contact the county councilor's office. And at their discretion and, and county commission discretion, we may be directed to go enter the property and treat the weed infestation. After that, an itemized statement has to be sent of the total cost, labor, equipment, material, plus a 10% penalty must be mailed to the landowner certified mail. Since 2020, we haven't got to that point yet. We have a pretty good success rate that a lot of people don't know they have it, don't know what it is. And so when we contact them and visit with them about it, then, then they normally take care of it. Typically after I, and, and this goes even for people who know, I'll contact them, visit with them. And, and normally after I, if they don't do anything in two weeks, then I send that warning notice, they think, okay, we better get out there and do something. So we've been very fortunate and, and like I said, you know, compliance is up. That's not saying we're not going to have the one that's going to test us, but, you know, we, we may find ourselves in the spot where, where here and before you asking permission to enter somebody's property and spray it. But that's how our enforcement program works. Kansas Department of Ag rules and regulations, this is kind of real easy and simple. Every year, the state has us submit an annual report and a management plan by March 15th of every year. It takes the total calculation of chemicals that we sold to each customer for each weed, what we've identified in our survey sections, and it comes up with the data that they use to, to formulate how many acres are infested. So the survey sections that I talk about, there are 10 sections minimum, they send us about 15 over just in case we, you know, one's in the middle of the Call River or one's in the middle of Lake Shawnee, we can't survey that. And so there's an alternative one to, to be able to do. They consist of 640 acres a section, so a grand total of 6,400 acres a year minimum. And, and that's where they get, the mathematical part I get to do is, is how many acres in that section overall are infested with each individual weed. And we take that and we can, we can add to it or we can subtract it. I do my state report a little different, I include right of ways when I do it. Most people just include just the section itself, but, you know, if they have a right of way adjacent to it, then I include that right of way to it as well. Those weeds are part of that section. And so this is what the state sends back to us every year. This is northeast Kansas right here. It has to include your salary, the chemical expenditures, chemical receipts, equipment and labor, chemical distribution and treated acres, and then your management plan. And then once they get it, if they approve it, then you get your approval check. They used to send you a little certificate that says you, you're approved for next year and, but now they don't do that anymore. You just get a little checkbox. You just get a little checkbox. So. So that's kind of, that's kind of it, what the state mandates for us. I mean, it's, it's pretty easy. Follow the rules, follow the Kansas noxious weed law. They've got a nice little book printed out that you have to follow, and don't do anything outside of that, and you're in good shape. Notables and financials. So in 2020, when I took over, you know, we, it was, it was a process identifying some of these things that, that probably needed to go away. And, and so we eliminated several chemicals. Speed Zone was one of them. Speed Zone is two four D just labeled with a turf label. And so, you know, we, we have two four D. It has an ag label. It has an all use stuff. So we eliminated two four D Ester, Rifle, Piper, and Perspective. So those are the ones we got rid of. We eliminated break, blanket spraying, a third of each township in the fall, as I mentioned earlier. We updated township maps to obtain an accurate mileage for billing purposes. We utilized Enterprise Fleet for equipment replacement program suggested by, that was already in place, but suggested by Betty. It's been a great program for us. We replaced all of our old equipment, so now all of our equipment's new. We eliminated spraying in the city of Topeka, all within the city limits of Topeka. Something that they had done in the past, and, and now it's just for stormwater locations only. That's detailed out and very specific with ten maps and locations. We eliminated spraying some of the Walker Roos watersheds in central and eastern Douglas County. We updated maps with the city of Topeka and stormwater pollution to get those exact locations that we were supposed to do. Got rid of Civic Plus and bought a, as a point of sale for herbicide systems, and bought Star Weed software to replace it. More in-depth and detailed, we can, we can actually just pull, when we get a state inspection every year, they'll want to see our picloram records, our Tordon, because it's restricted use. It's the one thing they want to see each and every time they come in. And so we can eliminate all the other categories of everything and just print them a report for Tordon. It makes it easy as all get out. So we don't have any more iPads and, and not using Cartograph. We completed all the deferred maintenance on the property of the building. As you can see, it's, it's looking great. No more roof leaks and, and bad furnaces. And I think everything has failed in the building that could possibly fail. Knock on wood, but, but we've replaced it all. Air conditioner, hot water tank. I mean, over the years, things just keep breaking. And so, you know, our building's practically, practically been remodeled. We installed GPS tracking on all the equipment, so we're able to track where the vehicles are. And the most important part of this is we're able to track exactly where that herbicide was applied. And so every time they hit the button in that truck to dispense herbicide, it is GPS tracked with the, with the location. And, and so, you know, there's, there's not going to be denying, if we did it, we did it. But the, the nice thing about it is if we were nowhere in the neighborhood, just because you seen us drive by, we know we didn't touch that button. So. And so when you get into the financial part of it, when you look at 2020, here's one of our big deals that, that we had tackled. I think probably one of the first things Kurt wanted done right out of the gate was, let's get an accurate, accurate mileage of, of roads inside the township. You know, since who knows when, they build twenty-six dollars a mile, centerline mile for spraying township roads. So after the first year, we got to looking at what it was going to cost and how many miles that they actually had. And so then we sat down with GIS and the townships, got down what roads are actually theirs on the, on the joint roads that shared. Who maintains this road? Who maintains this half? And so we come up with a complete mileage and accurate mileage statement. So they went from four hundred and twenty-one point three three miles to actually there's six hundred and ninety-nine point zero nine miles. And so you can see when you're looking at 2020's cost of it, let's just take Soldier Township for instance. In 2020, they had them listed at seventy-nine miles. They actually have a hundred and thirty-two miles in that township. And so the actual cost of chemical treatment in 2020 was twenty-three sixty-six forty. And the road mile cost was two thousand fifty-four dollars. And so the county, it cost the county three hundred and twelve dollars and forty cents to, to spray that. So as you go down the list, we've gotten better. We've raised the prices up each individual year to a goal in 2024 to switch them over to a cost base, the same as every other contract that we have in the county. So starting next year, they'll, they'll pay labor, equipment, and chemical material like, like all the other entities that we do. And so this has really narrowed down, you know, and, and was able to let us track exactly what's going on and dispense. As you can see, in 2022, we are far better in cost to the county than what we were in 2020. Identifying that was, was a, a great step forward and a, and a good direction to move in. So 2023, we'll see where we're at, but I would have to say we're going to be about right up on the upside of it. And so as we, as we initiated this plan and sent out notices to the township, we let them know if their bill was going to be cheaper than what it was by the road mile, that's what they would be billed. If their bill was okay for the road mile, then that's what they would bill, whichever, whichever one was the cheapest one. And so that gave them four years to plan to go to the cost based system here. And then a little spreadsheet on, on the work that we've done. Here's a list of all the entities that we do work for, the Sheriff's Department Parks and Rec, Coldranis, Tri-County, Walker Roos Watershed, City of Topeka, KDOT, and all twelve townships. In 2022, we built out forty-eight thousand ninety-seven dollars in revenue. Twenty-one was sixty-six thousand six hundred and forty-six, and in twenty-two, ninety-six thousand seven hundred and forty-eight. Commissioners, that's, that's, we didn't take on any more work. Same entities are listed there. That's just efficiencies and, and, and what we're doing. And so kind of excited to see what twenty-three will be, but, you know, also I have to keep in mind that twenty-three, we lost an applicator right in June. And so, you know, so we'll see. But. And then you, you see this every year at the end of the year in our monthly reports that we send over to you. But in 2020, our year-to-date revenues with chemical sales, sales, equipment, and labor, everything the weed department did was two forty-six in 2020, two ninety-nine in 2021, four twenty-two in 2022. And as of August twenty-fourth last week, it was two sixty-six. Keep in mind in 2022, that a lot of that is, is due to that chemical increase that we seen last year in prices. So, you know, it's an anomaly. It's, it's, we're, we're getting back down to where we were. So. And then this little chart here is at the beginning of the year when we rejected the bids for the big three, what I like to call them herbicides, the big three, like we did last year. This is the savings that we've, that we've had since we decided not to pay at the beginning of the year seventeen eighty-four a gallon for two four D and sixteen seventy-four a gallon for, for glyphosate, and, and then Remedy was sixty-one thirty-four. We're actually down to fifty-four dollars for, for Tricopear, thirteen dollars for, almost fourteen dollars for two four D, and eleven, almost twelve dollars for glyphosate. So rejecting those and, and buying as we need, you can see that we've saved twenty-three thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars for the year by, by rejecting those bids at the beginning of the year. So it was a, it was a gamble at the time, and, and, and I believe unless, knock on wood again, unless something drastically happens this late in the year, it was a gamble that paid off. I don't know that my nerves will allow me to, to gamble like that every year. But it definitely paid off this year. And then here's a link to the Kansas noxious weed law in case anybody's bored at home wanting to read it. Something for you to look at. And I'd like for you to control your noxious weeds. Favorite little picture there. And then my information right here, in case you need it, call me, talk to me, ask me any questions, identify any weeds or, or whatever you need. And then I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. And then I, then I want to do, after the question part, I, I just want to update you a little bit about the drones and talk about drones and, and directions and, and what's going on, the exciting part of it.
Any questions?
John, I knew at one time you'd had a, a hard time finding chemicals. It seems like that problem might be solved now.
It is solved. Yeah. Chemicals are out there. They're getting caught up. Prices, like I said, just keep coming down on, on a lot of things. And so it's really opened the market back up. Vendors are more competitive now with each other. The supply is there, so it's, it's not one of those that they, that they're scared to bid to you and then can't get. We, we found a new company, Missouri Farmers Association down in Emporia. They've been great to work with. You know, it, it's just night and day different from last year compared to this year. It's, it's crazy. I think we're probably the only, the only person in the country that can say our prices are coming down after, after last year. So.
John, do you ever, you ever work with, like Wildlife and Parks? I know they're battling the honeysuckle in particular.
Yeah, so we work with Wildlife and Parks around, you know, the state lake, Shawnee County State Lake for their ceresia and stuff. And so, you know, it's, 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 it's tough because it's, they, they've got a budget of so much a year and, and, and their budget don't touch the acreage that they have. And so, you know, they've, they've asked us to do some spraying for them. We, we try to steer away from it. Just, we have so much damage to tires when we do that. They, you know, don't cut their stumps down, and it's just, it's just horrible and damaging. And, and so I hate, you know, replacing tires that, we'll replace tires as it is on KDOT roads that probably don't have a hundred miles on it, and we'll hit a stop that they left up or something. And, and so we try to avoid it. But we help them with direction on, on what they need to do and work with them on, on trying to keep it out of that pasture to the south of them up there at the lake. So.
What about the drones?
Update on the drones. Here's where we're at on the drones. So currently, you know, we have the, we have the little drone that we do weed identification with. That program's working out great. So we've been using it well since the beginning of summer to, to fly areas and do our weed identifications for our state report. When we get into the bigger drones, it's over fifty-five pounds. We're still working with Kansas Department of Ag to try to, try to get that program to where they'll allow weed departments to actually apply chemicals instead of contract out. When they developed those rules at the beginning of the year, they did it in haste. And, and, and so they, they did not allow weed departments or government entities to do that. And so we're working with them to try to, to allow that program to, to get started. In the meantime, we're still using, just, well, between the two, it's either RISE UAV or Ag Partners to do our contract spraying for the city and for the lagoons and stuff. We've got a laundry list of work for them to do on, on the levee. And, and they're actually, they'll actually be here tomorrow to meet with Tim Laurent to look at spraying some stuff. Their water, or Eurasian watermill foil at Lake Shawnee, I guess, is, is back and in full force. And so they're going to meet with them and, and, and talk to Tim and stuff and, and try to get a plan and, and see where that goes. So. So the drone thing is still, it's still happening. You know, they've got, they've got a class in January that I'm, I'm really hoping to get applicators hired and get sent to in January. Because the next one's not till April, and that puts us right at the, right at the cuff of our kickoff. And so I'd like to get them going in April and then, and then go from there. But I kind of want some assurances from KDA that they're going to allow government entities to do this before, before we incur the cost of sending people to cool, school and getting, getting pilot license. So it kind of hinges on, on where they're at. So.
These pilot licenses, how, what does it take to get through that? Is that like a one-day course?
So this is, the one that K-State's offering over in Salinas is a week-long class. And, you know, just from what I've read about it and, and visited with the, visited with the people over there is, is, they're getting a lot of, I guess they get a lot of kids they send through this thing, and then they find, it's like a job corps program. They find them a job and, and send them to ag companies and, and wherever. And so we've been in contact with them, not only just to, to, you know, possibly get our guys to go through it, but to see if they had anybody that was going to graduate here soon and, and see if they'd be interested in, in coming to work for Shawnee County to do our treatments and I'd be our pilot and, and that. I, you know, I think the thing that we offer that the ag world's probably not going to offer is, is, you know, we, we work year-round. And, and in the ag business, they're going to spray, you know, six, seven months a year. And so, so we'll see. But when I contacted them, I think it was earlier in the month, it was, they had already graduated. And so they have a fall class that's coming out. And so we're kind of waiting for that. But, but I think it's a, I don't know that much about it. It's a week-long class, and then they have, they have a day the following week for, for their flying and part of it. So.
Any other questions or comments here?
I'm sure I bored you long enough with weeds.
Very good. Thanks, Sean.
You're very welcome.
Way ahead of where I was when I walked in here.
Or way behind. I don't know which.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, we have a commission meeting on Thursday, our regular time. Anybody else have anything they want to talk about?
Nope.
Nope. All right. Then we are adjourned. I'll try to control this crowd here.